The hearing will proceed for us to have to give a notification that the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and it's broadcast over to Lunenburg Public Access. I'll introduce you to the board members. I'm Al Gravell, James Bezakowski, Paul Doherty, David Blatt, and Pat Callahan. Normally Lisa would read the application and any other submitted communications, but unfortunately Lisa's not feeling well tonight, so we wish her a speedy recovery. So I will do that in a moment. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on their application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and the board members will have the opportunity to ask any questions they may have on the application. You can stay there for now. On that application while you're at the mic. After that, there'll be a public comment period, so anyone from the public, just come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. Then when the board will go into deliberation. And there are certain required findings for a special permit, which I'm going to read when I read the application. This is an application for a set special permit, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. Name and address of each applicant or petitioner is Richard Kontaxis, 281 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. And the undersigned is hereby seeking a special permit to erect a small-scale solar array that will not meet the side yard setback requirement of 25 feet. Has the proposed action or use begun? No. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 250-4.15.3.3. The street address or other sufficient description to adequately identify the land or buildings which the subject of this case is 355 Northfield Road, Lunenburg, Mass. Assessors map and parcel 40-31, 250, 4.15.3.3. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land in this case as listed as appears in the deed is Richard Kontaxis, 281 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. Deed recorded, Western North District Registry of Deeds, Books 8460, Page 184, deed recorded On the special permit, I will read the questions, and they are what we would determine our finding on, and I will read the answers. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health on duly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The answer: This project will not cause any problems to the public health, traffic congestion, or danger of fire or explosion. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood? And B is answered: This project will increase, not decrease, any land values or other amenities in the neighborhood. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use? This project will be completely surrounded by landscape boulders and be set back 150 feet off the front property line. And D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The answer: There will be no noise, dust, heat, or glare from this project. And that is signed on 12/18/18 by Richard Kontaxis, 281 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg, Mass. There is another note. The entire project will be surrounded by large boulders at least three feet high. Also, the entire area will be fenced in with a 24-hour video surveillance on the project. And if you have any questions, we can contact. There's also a copy of the section of the zoning bylaw. I will read the one section, the small-scale ground-mounted solar energy installations. A. Small-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installations are not permitted in the zoning dimensional setbacks as listed in 250-5.2 of the zoning bylaw and may not be located closer than 25 feet to the residential side yard. There's also a letter from New England Clean Energy to the Building Department referencing ground-mounted solar array for 355 Northfield Road, Lunenburg. To whom it may concern: The solar array to be built at 355 Northfield Road, Lunenburg, will incorporate SolarEdge SE 10,000-watt 10-kilowatt inverter and thus cannot exceed the 10-kilowatt size specified in the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Sincerely, Mark Derentenberger, President. Then there is a copy of the key specifications of the system that he would like to install. There is an abuser's list, and there is a plot plan. And with that, I would invite the applicant up to the mic and submit any more information or questions. The board will ask questions.
Well, I would like to say that I've been in Lunenburg for 10 years, and this home that I'm building here now, I wanted it to be my last home where I retire. And my main goal up here was to try to get my home down so that I can afford it and reduce my utility cost. I've spent a lot of money up there, and the solar panels will be key to reducing my overall utility cost. I'm not going to be making triple figures anymore. I'm going to retire. And these panels are important to me so that I can get my social security, work part-time, and be able to afford to live there. With the solar panels, which is key, I will be able to do so. Without them, I may be struggling, so I'm asking the ZBA to help me out with this variance. And I promise you, I've done several homes in this area, four of them, all higher-end, super-efficient, and I've done a good job. Mike Savage was with me for a few years. I do good work, all above code, and I can assure you that this will be a good project. It will be clean. It will be well taken care of, and there's really no threat to anybody. But that is the only place that I can put those panels. I can't put them on my roof because it's all wetland, and I can't cut the trees down, so I don't get enough sun over there. This is the only place where those panels will go. They're not going to be a hazard. They're maybe 15, 20 feet high, and like I said, there's going to be 24-hour surveillance. There's two power backup systems, one at the site where the panels are, one at the house, so if there's any disruption at all, they're automatically shut off. They withstand 150 mile-an-hour winds, and the boulders will keep any cars from coming in there. The fence will keep any children or anybody else getting in there. And everything goes underground, so there are no wires or anything there. And hopefully, the ZBA can see it in their hearts to help me out with this, so I can move forward and save some money. And that being said, I hope that you will help me with that.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I would open up questions from the board while he's at the mic.
Yeah, I've got a question. I understand your intent about putting the boulders so nobody could hit him with the vehicle or what have you. What are you going to have along the fence line between where the panels are and the property next door? Will there be any vegetation, anything to screen them, your neighbor's view?
There will be a fence there, and I can put vegetation there if the neighbors would like. That is not a problem. I can put plenty there. I mean, I'm going to surround the whole thing with the fences. It's a clear-through fence. And so I'm coming out 15 feet, and probably got another four or five feet there. If the neighbors would like me to put up some vegetation there, I would be happy to do so. I'd have to find something that the deer don't eat, and I would be happy to do that.
Right.
I've already spoken with Chris, my neighbor next door to me, and I'm going to put vegetation up between my house and his house. I'm going to put some trees up there. And whatever would make my abutters happy, I would be more than happy to accommodate them. This isn't going to be, you know, this is going to be a nice system. Nobody's going to get in there, and if they want me to put vegetation, I'll put it up there. But I've got to find something that the deer don't eat.
Right. I just don't want it to be an eyesore for your neighbors, you know, that's all.
I don't believe that it will be. It's a funny thing, because some people think that the solar panels are an eyesore. I don't agree with that. You know, I just sold a property at 37 Woodland Ave, and right next door to me is an eyesore. This guy looks like Sanford and Sons over there. That is an eyesore. But, I mean, solar panels? Why is solar panels an eyesore? Especially when they're, you know, got boarded all around them, they're well taken care of, got security on them. I don't understand that, but some people may...
In the eye of the beholder.
Yes, exactly. I don't, you know, I've done, one, two, three, four solar projects, all of them very successful, and you'd be surprised, they work. And your initial cash outlay is considerable, but it'll take me, you know, about nine or 10 years to make it up. But I'm looking down the road when I get older. I'm not going to be able to make money. And in the interim, you know, my bill will be almost nil, almost zero. That is my goal. And I've done that in all my projects, and this one here should, hopefully, will work for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Just in the layout itself, one section I read where it was in the letter here, 150 feet from Northfield Road. If I'm looking here, it says 100 feet. Is it 100 or 150?
No, no, no. It's from where my, from the road is...
Yeah.
...to where we'll start will be about 150 feet.
Okay.
From where it ends to the back of the property will be about 200.
Okay. And this is what I'm looking at, what was sent in. You can, well, yeah.
Right. Someone wrote 100 foot on it.
100 feet. And then there also is written 12 feet high, and I just heard you say much higher than high. Okay. Well, you have to go to the mic to say all this. You can take this with you. I've seen it. So if you could just redo that at the mic, so if anyone's at home...
All right. I was mistaken about the offset from the...
Mr. Chairman, was there another drawing that we had that showed the driveway?
This one here...
I remember seeing it online.
This one here does show the driveway.
No, it showed more of a detail about where exact... Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, and of course, I visited a property, I'm sure a lot of you did, and that is pretty accurate where the driveway is going to be. Well, that's where it is currently, or appears to be.
Yes. So I was mistaken with the offset from the front. That is 100 feet and 260 from the back. My mistake.
Okay. So it's 15 feet from the neighbor, the abutting neighbor?
Yes.
And that's why you're here?
Yes. Now, I want to bring something to your attention. The panels will be at an angle, okay? So the actual height will probably not even be, you know, 12 or 15 feet.
Okay.
They're going to be at an angle. The actual height will probably be maybe 12 or 13 feet at high.
They're usually 12. When you're doing an array of panels like this, it usually comes out to be about 12 feet. It's three high, 15 feet worth of panels. You put them on a tilt, and it becomes 12 feet.
Oh, well, thank you for that. I've never done a ground mount before. I've always done the roof.
Yeah. So it's about, it's roughly 12.
It's costly.
Yes.
Nine or 10 years, but it's going to be worth it. Then I'll be 77 if I can make it, and that's when I'll be looking for the benefits. In the interim, I'm paying very little.
Okay. So the question I had was, is there a particular reason why it's sited where it is?
Yes. Particular reason is that is where I get 80% sunshine, and that's the only place on the whole lot because of where the trees are. The trees block out a lot of sun. If you're looking at the thing there, the sun comes right behind the house, and this is all wetland here.
Right.
So when it gets to around 11 or 12, 10, 11 in the morning, those trees are blocking out all the sun. But it's not blocking out the sun over by that driveway. So I can get 80% sunlight over there, making it efficient. Whereas if I put it on the roof, I was getting 40 and 50. Not feasible. So that is the only spot where really, because they came up and they did a shade test...
Yeah.
And he walked all around the whole property, and he says, "Richard, this is where they should go. You need to go to the ZBA and see if you can get a variance on it."
And this is all woods, and they're tall.
Because this is the only place where those panels will go.
Okay. So the back of the lot is all wood?
Yes. That's all wetland.
And up to even where it says the 100-foot riverfront zone, there's trees past that towards the house?
Yes. Yes.
David, I can tell you, I was there, and it is all tree line right to behind the house.
Yeah.
And they're very tall trees.
Okay. Because that, my goal, my, the reason I'm asking is because if there was a way of moving it to where, you know, it says Lot 2, you could, you could...
No.
Right. You can move away, you can move away from the 20, you could be past that 25 feet.
Exactly. Yes, I wanted to do that, but then that was bringing it from 80% down to about 55 or 60%. And really not...
No, I understand. It doesn't make it feasible.
This is basically where we wanted it.
That area would be kind of where that pile of dirt is?
That's loam.
Loam, okay. Yeah. But that's where he's references, that would be the area that he's talking about.
Yes. No, I can't get enough sun there.
Right.
Which direction do the panels face?
They're going to be facing, as you see them there, they will be facing that way, towards the sun. The sun is coming this way.
So reference it to the driveway. Which way will they face, reference to the driveway?
They're facing the driveway. If you're looking at the driveway from where I'm looking at it, it's right in front of me, and they will be coming at this angle, facing behind me. So they're going to be facing...
So the highest point will be facing towards your house?
No, towards the...
The property line.
Yes, but very little.
Yeah.
It's only going to go like three or four feet. It's, like you said, they know...
Yeah.
I know. My neighbor has ground-mounted system.
She has some. Is she in Lunenburg?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Did they have the proper offset?
Yeah.
Uh, no. They needed a special permit.
They needed a special permit. So my issues were with the wetland, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not a fan, never have been and never will be, of disrupting wetlands or doing any of that stuff, you know? But I took a chance building there because all of those trees that are over there, they're threatening my home and everything, but it is what it is. I chose to build there. And I'm not a fan of destroying wetlands at all. I don't believe in it. I've seen a lot of deer down there. So in reference to the vegetation that I need to put up there, I have to be careful because they eat it all. So, I mean, I've got to put up something that's nice, and as far as where the, where my abutter is, I can put something up there that goes even a little higher because that's not going to affect the sun.
Pine trees?
So if you want pine trees, I can put pine trees. They grow fast.
Yeah.
They'll fill it in, you know? But that's not an issue with me because there's nothing in the front.
You're right.
It's an interesting project, you know, but we had to go over the whole property. Where can we put these things? This particular guy in New England, I've done three with him, and they just do a great job. And they compete with SolarCity and Sunrun. They compete with all of them. They're hands-on, they're local, they do a good job, they come up. He's always coming back to me, you know, like, I was the first person in Lunenburg to have solar at 281 Pleasant Street. He did that job. And every six months, he'd come up, "Any problems? What's going on?" He'd check it with meters. I've had no problems at all, and I cut my costs 100% on that small ranch I have on Pleasant Street. So that's why I was encouraged to do it up here.
Any other questions from the board?
Patrick, no questions?
You've actually kind of just answered every question I thought I had.
Kind of went over it pretty carefully. I wanted to be prepared.
I appreciate that.
Are you planning battery backup or you're not?
Uh, that's an interesting question. I'm in the process now of, what I wanted to do was get the power wall from Tesla.
Okay. Yeah.
But try to get it.
No. Well, I can get it.
They don't have it yet. Other than that, I'm going to have a generator, probably a propane generator backup, because I don't want to go out there anymore and, you know, crank up generators. I just don't want to do that anymore, and that will be my backup. But I would love to have that power wall. That's costly.
Well, just make sure he gives you the right inverter then.
Yes.
Because if the standard inverter does not have the ability to have battery backup that they give you.
I believe he mentioned that. That's a good, that's a good point.
So...
From what he told me, though, that the power wall, once your power goes out, okay, this power wall kicks in.
I understand that, but the inverter has to have the ability to have batter, to power the battery, to have the switch for the battery backup.
For the battery backup.
So it has to be built into the inverter. It's not much difference in the cost.
Not much difference?
Like, you're talking $50 usually.
Oh, I would do that, most definitely.
But it's just, they don't usually, it's not the one that most folks stock, and that's why.
I can't, I can't seem to get one. I can't get the battery. So I'm probably going to have to go with the power generator, a Generac, that will kick in when my power goes down.
Give it two years, you can get the battery, so. All right. I, pretty much, my questions got answered. I'm familiar with what you're doing for a ground mount.
Very good. You gave me some helpful information, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Thank you.
Would you like this back?
I would. Thank you.
Can I ask if you've had a solar project before?
Couple, yes.
Yeah. I have one.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to ask one question. I know that, I looked up one of the emails I had that was in a butter that sent out.
Jonathan's here.
I was just going to ask if Jonathan was here, and do you want me to read it, or would you like to just come up and...
You can read it or I can read it.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'm going to open it up for public discussion now, so if you would like to come up and read it, that's fine.
Sure.
Yeah. All, everything has to go to the board.
Name and address.
Your name and address.
Yes. My name is Jonathan Heimberg, 331 Northfield Road, and I, he will be my future neighbor. And I want to say that I saw the plans, and I do not have an issue with the current plan as it is filed, but I would want to be notified and have the opportunity to be heard if there is any deviation from the current plan. And I am presuming that based on the application for his special permit, that if approved, it would be installed as reflected in that plan. That's all I wanted to say, so I have no opposition to it as it stands now, but I do have a couple of things I need clarification on as well. I don't understand if it's going to be surrounded with vegetation or other items like boulders. I mean, wouldn't that reduce its effectiveness in getting solar?
You have to, you have to, you can't, you have to address the board.
Oh, okay.
And what we will do is we will call him back up to answer these questions. Yeah, no, I know. I know.
You want me to ask both of them, or one?
Yeah, just ask both questions, and then we'll invite him back up to answer your questions.
So the first is how surrounding objects or items will impact his plans with that. And just to clarify, Mr. Kontaxis had approached me a couple of months ago about whether he could have my permission to take down some tall standing trees on my property, which were blocking his initial plan to do solar on his rooftop. And I did give him permission to do that, but then I found out that that would not work as well for him, I guess. So I just wanted it to be known that I had approved the initial rooftop solar. So I don't know if that's still an option.
So I guess the question on that one is, are you looking for, are you looking to not have those trees removed? Have those trees been removed?
As I understand it, he told me he did not do that...
Okay.
...when he found that that would not work as well for him.
So are you looking to make sure that those trees aren't removed at this point?
Well, he told me that they weren't, so I'm taking his word on that.
All right.
I guess I'm just raising it as an option to go back on for him if this isn't approved.
Okay. Okay. All right. Very good.
That's my statement, and two things to clarify.
Can I ask one more question while you're right here? Now, earlier they were talking, Jim was talking about a buffer between your property and maybe planting some vegetation. Is that something you would like, or...
Um, well, yeah. I mean, I think we, there is an existing grape vine between our property, but it's kind of sparse, and it hasn't been really kept up.
Okay.
So that's something we could look into.
You could look into that. Okay.
So, and so looking at, looking at the array, I mean, we'll ask, we'll ask him as well, but looking at how he described the array, are you face, is, if I'm standing in your yard, do I face the panels?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I got you. Okay. I see what you want.
When you're standing in my backyard facing the woods, his property is to the right of mine.
Gotcha. I see now. Okay. I understand now.
And as I understand it, his proposed array will be on the opposite side.
Opposite side, right.
Perfect.
Okay. Gotcha.
So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite more of the public up, so if there's more questions, he can answer them at that time. So if you would like to speak, come right up. Give your name and address.
J.J. Cote, 371 Northfield Road. Could I look at the diagram?
Yes, you may. You can take it right down there if you would like.
Okay. So the proposed location for the panels is right next to the corner of my lot. In my opinion, this is the best location on the property for a solar panel, for the reasons that were stated, and I have no objection. The panels are also close to Mr. Schwartz's lot, and so I'll encourage you to also get his opinion, since they're actually closer to his property than to mine.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, come right up. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Jay Schwartz. I'm at 379 Northfield Road, and I've talked to Richard briefly about the project, and I'm totally for the project. The only thing, I, two questions. One, I'd like to know exactly what the sideline dimensions to the project are, and also, he talked about putting some vegetation up, which I'm for.
Okay. I'm going to let you take this as well, and then you can see the dimensions. I should have just left it up there. That will give you some of the dimensions.
Yeah, you can keep that or take this one. It doesn't make any difference.
Yeah. It's 15 feet from the panels to the side yard, because that's the width.
If you're, yeah.
Do you want one too, sir?
Guess not. We're waiting. Okay.
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
If you're good, yeah.
Do you want it?
Yeah, if you could go back to the mic and talk.
There's an awful lot of deer on the, on the property. I lost a lot of arborvides, so he's gonna have to come up with, with something that's deer resistant, but I was searching the, uh, the internet for something, and I couldn't really come up with something, but something deer resistant along that sideline would be appreciated.
Would be good for you.
Yep.
Okay. So you have no other issues with the project, or no issues?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I mean, everybody should, if they could, should go that way. It's good for the environment.
Okay. Very good.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Would anybody else, uh, from the public like to speak? Hearing on, I'll invite the applicant back up to answer the questions that, uh, these neighbors have brought up.
I believe, uh, John asked a question about, uh, would the boulders and everything hinder the light that's gonna get to those panels? Uh, very, very little. The boulders are probably gonna be about three feet high, four feet high, and these are probably two hundred fifty, three hundred pound boulders. They're gonna be all right next to each other. It will take very little away from the light that's coming in, because the panels will be just picked up off the ground about two or three feet. So the boulders will not hinder it. The vegetation that I would be happy to put for my neighbors, and if there's a pine tree back there that they want me to take down for them, I'll be happy to do that, too. That will be behind the panels. That will not be a, an issue. And right now, I'm thinking pine trees. They grow fast, they'll look nice. I can probably throw even ten or twenty over there, because your butters have been good to me so far, and make that whole area much nicer. I have planted a fence along my path, along the thing over there. I'd be happy to do that. So, but the boulders will not influence the, uh, effectiveness, and the fence is a, it's a few, it's a steel fence there with the diamonds, so that the light can go through. Those will be about four feet high, so it's really not gonna take away much from my efficiency.
Okay.
So are you doing the fence just because you're worried about folks getting on the panels?
I'm doing the fence because I think it's the right thing to do, to keep children out of there, to keep animals out of there, to keep anybody out of there. Stay out of there. I don't want anybody over there.
Okay.
I think that's the best thing to do. It makes my butters happy. Whereas if you've got no fence, you know, then it's, some kids can get in there, or animals could get in there, and I really don't want that. Every project I've seen for ground mounts, uh, in this particular situation, it's recommended.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna put it all the way around, and nobody gets in there.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
And that's, uh, I thought it was a good idea.
And the purpose of the boulders is to, what, keep cars from...
People coming down the driveway, okay, let's say it's, it's, it's a icy day or something, and you're coming down my driveway and you slide off, well, those, those boulders are gonna keep you from hitting that away. These are three hundred pound boulders. They're gonna be about this high, and they're gonna be right next to each other. So you're gonna need a Mack truck going thirty, forty miles an hour to get by those boulders. And that's just not gonna happen on my property.
Okay.
So it, it should not happen. So I just wanted to protect the array. It's costly. I don't want kids in there, I don't want animals getting in there. But, you know, the way it was explained to me, all the power, there's no power there. It's all underground.
Right.
But there's still a, a circuit breaker there. If anything happens, say we get a hundred fifty mile an hour wind, which is unreasonable, and these things start shaking, well, then that power shuts off. And if that one fails, then we have a backup at my, at the main, that will shut off. So I wanted to make sure that there was no electrical problems there at all. It's gonna cost, but like I said, I'm looking ten years down the road. I know it costs, but it's worth it to me. Hopefully I can, uh, like I said, I'm looking down, ten years from now, I won't be making tuckled figures. I'll be lucky if I make twenty. And at that time, I should be all set.
Okay.
If the ZBA sees it, and they're hard to help me.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank my butters also. Anything I can do for them to make them happy, I'd be happy to do that. Mr. Schwartz mentioned a pine tree that may, a dead pine tree on our property, if he wants me to take that down while I have my people up there cutting, I'll do it, and I'll even make it, uh, give you some more pine trees over there, make it real nice for them.
John asked about cutting the trees on his property that you've said that you haven't done, and...
I did not do it because I could not get the roof...
So you're not interested in doing that at all?
No, not at all, no.
Yeah.
But he was, uh, very nice, very nice, very thoughtful, and willing to help me. I appreciated that, but I didn't do it because it, it wasn't gonna work. I would have to cut down a lot of trees in the wetland and didn't wanna do it.
So, so would you be adverse, and I have exposed the butters here, but the idea of the, uh, on the property line having a, more of a solid fence, you know, that would cover the three feet, four feet, three feet, four feet for the bottom? So that way we don't have to worry about like a hedge, like a, a deer resistant hedge, and then you can do like a, you know, a simple pine, like a dwarf pine, because you really only have to go up about twelve feet, you know, that they would ever see.
Yes, that would be...
So you don't really want, you know, the idea is you don't want a...
You want a solid fence back there?
Right, just a solid fence. This way, it, further down the line, when, if and when they ever wanted to sell, the, you know, you don't have to go through the next person. I'd love the house, but I see those panels. Okay? So, um, that's the whole thought.
Not a problem.
Right. Um, would be just to put something solid on the bottom, and this way you can have pine trees come, and the pine trees, not do the tall ones that get up to forty feet, which is the Christmas tree...
Yeah, right.
But just do some dwarf pines, and save yourself some money.
So you want me to go maybe a five or six foot fence?
No, I'm not even looking at that. Even if you just did the same four feet, you're talking about around, but just the back one being solid.
Solid. I can do that.
And that way, you know, because you don't really, a six foot fence now looks like a fence. A three, four foot fence looks like a, you know, like it looks like a boundary.
Yeah, I'll even turn the nice side to their property, so they can look at it.
I'm, I'm just looking at it as just further down the line. It's one thing when you, you say it now, but it's one, another thing if I go to sell it.
Yes.
And that's one of the things we think about, is if I go to sell it, what's it gonna look like for the next person?
Well, let me say this. When I get done with my property, you give me four or five years, and I will increase everybody's property value on me, and I guarantee that. I don't do...
Ooh, how much you gonna give him? You guys get that in writing? No?
Well, don't put it in writing, but I can assure you that it, it will look very nice. All of my properties have been very nice.
Alright, very, very good. Thank you.
Alright.